It is now six thirty and I would just ask that you please bow your heads and join me with an invocation and then please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Heavenly Father, we just come this evening thanking you for this day, asking that you grant us wisdom and guidance in all that we do. We pray, Lord God, that you will bless our county, bless this state, bless this nation, and we ask all of these things in your son Jesus' name and all of those that agree, please say amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. This meeting of the Board of Commissioners is now hereby called to order and I would like to make the following announcement. The following planning and zoning item which was advertised for this meeting has been withdrawn by the applicant and it is MC sixteen oh six, Smith Douglas Homes of Woodstock, Georgia, requesting a modification to existing zoning conditions for the property located on the north side of Jonesboro Road, west of Chambers Road. So again, this planning and zoning item has been removed from the agenda as requested by the applicant. We'll now move into the acceptance of the agenda. I now call for a motion to accept the agenda as published. We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? The motion moves. We will now ask Ms. Melissa Robinson to come forth regarding the proclamation for the Retired Educators' Day.
Good evening Chair and Commissioners.
Good evening.
Okay, good evening Chair and Commissioners. Tonight we have two proclamations for retired educators and for breast cancer awareness and I'm going to read these proclamations concurrently right after each other and then we'll call up groups for pictures after both proclamations have been read. This evening we have a proclamation recognizing November fifth, two thousand seventeen, as Retired Educators' Day. Whereas more than a hundred and twenty-one thousand retired educators in Georgia and more than twenty-eight thousand who are members of the Georgia Retired Educators Association. And whereas the retired educators of Georgia donate thousands of hours of volunteer service and make invaluable contributions to the welfare of their respective communities across the state. And whereas retired educators influence the lives of generations of young people, motivating and inspiring their students, to use their innate talents and abilities to the fullest and to become responsible contributing citizens. And whereas Henry County citizens are grateful for the work done by retired educators and commend them for their time and commitment to bettering the county. And whereas it is appropriate that a day be designated for citizens to express their appreciation for the contributions that retired educators have made and continue to make for the betterment of human lives and for society. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Henry County Board of Commissioners that November fifth, two thousand seventeen, is recognized as Retired Educators' Day and call upon the citizens of Henry County to observe that day in an appropriate manner honoring retired educators for their dedication and commitment to the youth of Henry County. The second proclamation this evening is a proclamation recognizing October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas breast cancer is the second most common form of cancer found in women in the United States and is the leading cause of cancer death for women with one in eight women being diagnosed with breast cancer in their lifetime. And whereas more than two thousand men will be likely diagnosed with some form of breast cancer in two thousand seventeen. But fortunately, thanks to early detection and improved treatment options, deaths from breast cancer have decreased significantly in the last decade. And whereas all women are encouraged to talk to their healthcare providers about mammograms and other methods of early detection, as well as their risk of developing breast cancer and what can be done to reduce that risk. And whereas many Americans have endured the pain and heartbreak of losing a family member to breast cancer and it's the memories of those loved ones that drive us to find a cure. And whereas during the month of October, we pause to reflect on those we have lost to this terrible disease and stand strong for those currently facing a breast cancer diagnosis. And we strengthen our resolve to do our part in supporting those affected. And whereas by raising awareness of breast cancer and supporting research, prevention, and early detection, we will move closer to eradicating this disease. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Henry County Board of Commissioners that October is designated as Breast Cancer Awareness Month and we urge all Henry County residents to spread awareness of this disease, provide support for those affected by this illness, and educate others on its prevention and early detection. And this is on the seventeenth, the day of October, two thousand seventeen. So we'd like to call forward all, everyone here supporting breast cancer awareness for a picture with the board. Okay. So we get everybody moving just a little bit, a little before. You can go, but then you come in front, don't be shy. And if you can see me, then I can see you, so make sure you can see my camera. Okay? On three, one, two, three. Oh. One more. Thank you. Thanks for being here, thank you. Yes, and if we could call up the retired educators for a photo, please?
Well, we do thank our retired teachers for being here this evening and as well as those who are here for awareness of Breast Cancer Awareness Month. We do encourage especially those women to get yourselves checked and we'll keep those in thoughts who've lost loved ones, but we also encourage the men to encourage the women in their lives to also be checked as well. So thank you again. All right, well we will now move to item seven regarding the appointment to Council on Aging for District One. We have a resolution appointing Thomas J. Crump, Jr. as District One's appointee to the Council on Aging. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, we call for a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion?
Yes.
Have a second, any further discussions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, the appointment is made. We'll now move to our consent agenda. The following agenda items will, shall be considered on the consent agenda. We have a resolution approving the Henry County Sentence Enforcement Probation Services Plan and we also have a Henry County Department of Transportation Resolution authorizing speed humps to be installed within the Ives subdivision. Are there any items that need to be removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Shall move.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Well this now ends our consent agenda. We were now moving to the public comment segment of our meeting this evening and we welcome citizens to voice their county-related concerns and opinions. All persons wishing to speak for public comments must sign in with the county clerk, complete the public comment speaker form prior to the beginning of the meeting, or you will not be recognized. We recognize the First Amendment rights of each person who addresses the board and requests citizens to please be respectful. Any person who makes personal, impertinent, slanderous, or profane remarks to any member of this board, staff, or general public will be interrupted by the chair or any member of the board for disorderly conduct as a warning. If the disorderly conduct continues, the citizen will be excused from the meeting. At this time, we will begin the public comment section of this meeting and the call upon our county clerk to recognize those wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners.
Chair, we have twelve speakers signed up tonight. We want me to read the first six and let them come forth and then we'll do the second six. The first six are in this order Larry Maury, Bill Tony, Bubba Coffey, John Redfern, Tina Coria, and Ashley Rel.
Ethics in Government Larry Maury. You know, the good book says that in the end of times they will heap into themselves teachers having itching ears to hear a lot. It won't be the truth. And today, you know, if you stand for something, you know, everybody thinks you're a little bit, you know, radical. People need to look at, you know, for about eleven years now we've been standing against what we feel like is a, is an education system that's broke. I've invited everybody locally, state, and federal government. Johnny Isaacson's the only one that's been to our school. And you know, you act like it doesn't mean anything for education, but let me give you some reasons why you need to. You know, our chamber says everything's wonderful and glorious and education is great, but we've got twenty-nine schools that's D or F ranked by the governor. And we've got five principals that just had to be moved to try to improve five of the worst ones. So it is not all glorious. In metro area which Henry County belongs to, five hundred thousand youth live in neighborhoods with some of the highest rates of poverty and lowest rates of economic mobility of any region in the country. Over half of the third graders are not exceeding their reading standards, over half. I want to talk about one of the main problems. In nineteen seventy, depressants were given to about two hundred thousand children in our school. Today, there's fifteen million being given Ritalin, Adderall, those kind of drugs. And now our older youth are checking out on oxycodone and heroin and things like that. I want to show you the reason why. That's a ten-year-old subdivision. Isn't that pretty? You know, everybody wants to talk about Nash Farms and monuments here and what we ought to do like Clayton County and what we ought to do like. Here's some things that bother me. And it ought to bother you because your children, your grandchildren.
Move to the next item, please.
I've got two minutes left.
Oh, you do, I just did, this is inappropriate, so please move to the next item.
And here's, here's one of the, another thing that really bothers me. We had a Dollar General broke into in Stockbridge the other night. Please pay attention to what he's got in his hands. That's AK. See the clip in it? We talk about all them shootings out yonder, but we got it right here in Henry County. Ladies and gentlemen, we can hide behind and you, some of you Commissioners tonight will go home to a gated fence and you live in your little ivory palace, but tomorrow night it'll come visit you or the next night, the next night. You won't cover yourself forever up there in that little penthouse. If you let it alone, cancer long enough, it'll eat somewhere else in your body and kill you. We don't seem to understand that, we don't seem to care. We talk about everything else of spending money here and spending money there, but we don't spend it on the things that stop that cancer. And if we don't stop it, it's going to get all of us. I hear every week, well I'm just going to leave. I'm just going to leave. Everybody can't leave. Everybody can't run. Everybody can't hide behind those ivory gates. Sooner or later, the news is going to come around all of us.
Mr. Maury, please discontinue your slanderous comments, we're going to ask you to please, that's the last warning, thank you.
Bill Tony, McDonald, Georgia. I'd like to speak again about the Water Authority. I'm sure that everyone of y'all got one of those, I think everybody in the county got one. This is a note that, notice that your water rates are going up. Okay, you've got all these rates going up. They're getting two mils of tax. And they have things like this, thirty-six percent personnel. That's ridiculous. Everybody over there is making salaries beyond. Mr. Lindy Farmer, in December he'll be making, according to my, the projections from the past, he'll be making three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and two fifty-nine. That is ludicrous, that is bad. We got a police department and the public safety that are starving to death. These people, we don't have enough police officers to go around. The break, the response time to come out to somebody's house on a break-in right now is up to two hours. When they took the, stole the tires off of my car, it took over two hours for them to get out there to write a report. Now, they're saying, and that's it, they're having, they're short, they're short of police officers. We got the money right here, they're wasting the money. It needs to go over there, you guys need to get on board and get this thing. It's not going to be a quick fix, by no means. Not a quick fix at all, but we can get some money going to the police department, public safety. It's got to come, it's got to come fast. We're losing, we're losing ground. The crooks and the bad guys, they know, they know where you're weak and you can't be weak. In the military, you can't be weak. You agree? You got to be strong, you got to be, you got to be better than they are. I'm telling you, what you can do, you can get a referendum going. Now I know for a fact that you can't take away the two mils until, because they have debt, but what you do is you stop the debt and then it'll catch up. You can stop it. Mr. Farmer, I don't think he's doing that fantastic of a job over there anyway. All right?
Mr. Tony, we will not address individuals outside of the board, please, thank you.
Okay. Okay, we're good. Okay. Moving over to the golf course. This right here is eight months, in eight months the golf course lost sixty-six thousand, ninety-six dollars and eighteen cents. Everybody up there has accepted that that golf course is going to lose money. The finance people, they say that the golf course is going to lose money, but we're just trying to not lose no more than we have to. I've gone to a professional real estate people. We can turn a sixty-six thousand dollar loss into a hundred and forty thousand dollar gain just by shutting the thing down and leasing out the properties. The properties, that right there is a conservative figure on what can be done with it. Now, nobody, if, nobody sitting there can prove me wrong because you've never tried. Y'all have never, as far as I know, you've never even looked at it to where you could shut it down and do this and do something else with the property. Y'all are going to have to, have to get off of this stuff and get it done. Now at last, a lot of people say, why don't you get up there, why you do this stuff, why don't you even come every week, I mean every meeting? Before we, before we started coming to meetings, all these properties, six properties were bought at fifty-two million dollars. As far as I know, we hadn't done anything like that since the five years I've been coming up here. And I thank you very much.
Thank you.
I called, explained about the wrecker services overcharging.
Could you state your name and address, please, sir?
Bubba Coffey.
Okay.
And I'd like to say about getting, getting it back the way it used to be because the company that y'all got now doing it are overcharging, ripping people off left and right. The county guy Vince y'all got, the taxpayers are paying money for, ain't got a clue what he doing. He don't know nothing about the administration fees.
Please not address the employees, please, not, let's not address the employees, just talk about your issue, sir, thank you.
Quit looking at who?
I said, please don't address our employees personally if you'll talk about the issue.
How am I supposed to get to you, tell you who it is?
Please continue, thank you.
I mean, I, I called some board members on here, talked to them, y'all, y'all letting this get out of hand. Before y'all put wrecker one on and corner lot, both of them were suspended from the rotation of Henry County. Corner lot was suspended for lying on their, uh, paper when they filled out application paper. Said you couldn't have a junkyard, he ended up having one, so they suspended him. Wrecker one got suspended for overcharging. Well Jim Elkins quit towing for Henry County and he called them and told them, I ain't towing no more. So what did they do? They put both of them wrecker services that were suspended right back on and didn't solve any problems. They out there overcharging, I mean, you went from, you got a new Henry County thing now, it used to be one eighty-five in the day, then it went to one oh five. And in July, y'all changed it, that they said the board voted on, the Commissioners voted on, well, I talked to Mr. Wilson outside, he ain't never seen that paper, but yes, y'all vote on it. It went from one oh five to one seventy-five to get a car impounded or a wreck, okay? And if there's any cleanup, they add a hundred and fifty dollars to the, to that, to the one seventy-five. So that makes it what, three thirty-five? Okay? And then your storage, you went from twenty-four hours free storage to thirty dollars a day. So once that car hits their lot, you're looking at three hundred and fifty-five dollars to get your car out right off the bat. That's not right, jump that kind of price, the taxpayers in Henry County, I mean, it's not right. The insurance company, my insurance went up, they say they look at how many wrecks are in the area, plus the wrecker services what they charge in the area. The county manager told me that they don't have, they don't let them, they don't set rates for Henry County. In the last forty years they did, used to be a privilege to tow for Henry County, now you can do what you want to. I mean, it's not right. They worked a wreck, I worked a wreck out here on eighty-one with a concrete truck, went out there with two wreckers, turned the concrete truck up, they called corner lot out there because they was the one on rotation, they come out there and we done had it just about up and they hook one cable to it, they was there for fifteen minutes at the most. Then they got a Bobcat out there and the county and the state brought their dump truck out there because it's a state highway. We charged two thousand dollars for them, that wreck. And I towed, the different company towed the truck back to corner lot because the DOT wanted to do an inspection on it. Well, when they come, Walker come get their dump truck, they charged them forty-five hundred dollars and didn't even tow the truck. I mean, how are, how are y'all letting these people get by with robbery? I've been asking questions and nobody wants to tell me anything. Vincent, the one that...
Please don't call our employees, thank you.
Okay, well, he ain't got a clue what he doing.
Please don't address our employees in that way, thank you.
Well, I'm just telling you the facts.
And that's our last warning on that, Mr. Coffey.
Huh?
I said, please proceed and talk about the issue.
Well, I'm just saying, y'all need to look at this. I mean, it's not right. You charge, they said wrecker one's up there charging seventy-five dollars, once the insurance company comes in there and pays the car out, total what the car is, they adding another seventy-five dollars to pull it out of their wrecker yard and set it outside the gate. I mean, it's unreal, you don't, you, you had two companies suspended, then you put them right back on and let them do what they want to do. Corner lot charges forty dollars, wrecker one charges seventy-five.
Thank you, Mr. Coffey.
Y'all need to get a grip on that.
Thank you.
John Redfern.
Y'all, y'all letting this get out of hand. Before y'all put Wrecker One on and Corner Lot, both of them were suspended from the rotation of Henry County. Corner Lot was suspended for lying on their, uh, paper when they filled out application paper. Said you couldn't have a junkyard. He ended up having one, so they suspended him. Wrecker One got suspended for overcharging. Well, Jim Elkins quit towing for Henry County, and he called them and told them, I ain't towing no more. So what did they do? They put both of them wrecker services that were suspended right back on, and didn't solve any problems. They out there overcharging, I mean, you went from, you got a new, uh, Henry County thing now. It used to be one eighty-five in the day, then it went to one oh five. And in July, y'all changed it, that they said the board, uh, voted on, the commissioners voted on. Well, I talked to Mr. Wilson outside, he ain't never seen that paper, but yes, y'all vote on it. It went from one oh five to one seventy-five to get a car impounded, or a wreck, okay? And if there's any cleanup, they add a hundred and fifty dollars to the, to that, to the one seventy-five. So that makes it, what, three thirty-five? Okay? And then your storage, you went from twenty-four hours free storage to thirty dollars a day. So once that car hits their lot, you're looking at three hundred and fifty-five dollars to get your car out, right off the bat. That's not right. Jump that kind of price. The taxpayers in Henry County, I mean, it's, it's not right. The insurance company, my insurance went up. They say they look at how many wrecks are in the area, plus the wrecker services, what they charge in the area. The county manager told me that they don't have, they don't let them, they don't set rates for Henry County. In the last forty years, they did. Used to be a privilege to tow for Henry County. Now that you can do what you want to. I mean, it's not right. They worked a wreck, I worked a wreck out here on eighty-one with a concrete truck, went out there with two wreckers, turned the concrete truck up. They called Corner Lot out there, because they was the one on rotation. Well, they come out there, and we done had it just about up, and they hook, hooked one cable to it, they was there for fifteen minutes at the most. Then they got a Bobcat out there, and the county and the state brought their dump truck out there, because it's a state highway. We charged two thousand dollars for them, that wreck. And I towed, the different company towed the truck back to Corner Lot, because the, uh, DOT wanted to do an inspection on it. Well, when they come, Walker come get their dump truck, they charged them forty-five hundred dollars, and didn't even tow the truck. I mean, how are, how are y'all letting these people get by with robbery? I've been asking questions, and nobody wants to tell me anything. Vincent, the one that...
Please don't call our employees uninvited.
Okay, well, he ain't got a clue what he doing.
Please don't address our employees in that way. Thank you.
Well, I'm just telling you the facts.
And that's our last warning on that, Mr. Coffee.
Huh?
I said, please proceed and talk about the issue.
Well, I'm just saying, y'all need to look at this. I mean, it's not right. You charge, they said Wrecker Ones up there charging seventy-five dollars. Once a insurance company comes in there and pays the car out, total what the car is, they adding another seventy-five dollars to pull it out of their wrecker yard and set it outside the gate. I mean, it's, it's unreal. You don't, you, you had two companies have suspended. Then you put them right back home and let them do what they wanna do. Corner Lot charges forty dollars, and Wrecker One charges seventy-five.
Thank you, Mr. Coffee.
Y'all need to get a grip on that.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is John Redfern, and I own Fiduciary Solutions Insurance Agency here in Stockbridge. And I've come to chat very briefly about continuing some observations and recommendations about the Henry County Health Insurance Program. And as you may recall, I was here about five months ago, specifically on the evening of May the sixteenth. And I spent my five minutes then, laying out my experiences and building and operating large group health insurance benefits program, specifically, uh, one for the Medical Association of Georgia, some seventeen thousand Georgia physicians and their employees. And I ran out of time. So, we're gonna pick up and we're gonna wrap up very quickly here this evening about that. Uh, the program that I built from scratch and ran exclusively for those six years included, uh, the purchase of a competing health insurance company, uh, health insurance carrier, specifically in the process of competing against them, as I told you. We bought Blue Cross Blue Shield of Georgia. Also, we introduced to the Georgia market and largely expanded in the Georgia market healthcare savings accounts. And that was in nineteen ninety-six. I also hasten to add that we're talking about associational health insurance business. This is for the Medical Association of Georgia and healthcare savings accounts. And hopefully, it's not lost on anybody, that that's exactly where the federal government is and is talking about going right now. I sat in this room with, with y'all, or your predecessors, in the spring of twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen, and bore witness in this conference room to the county staff briefing the board, that, uh, very quickly, you had to hear the recommendations from the staff and the, the existing agent at the time, that you had to hear, deliberate on, and pass the budget for the county health insurance plan on the spot. And we suffered through that. That was what happened in twenty fifteen, and in twenty sixteen, I was present here with you, as we went through deliberations over a couple of meetings, and eventually passed that budget in twenty sixteen, not knowing quite where we're gonna find a couple million dollars. I remind the board that, uh, the current agent is not the only insurance agent, or having the only insurance agency in Henry County. I remind the board that no effort has been made to bid out this business to any other insurance agent or agency in Henry County, in anybody's memory in this room. And I remind the board that Christmas is almost upon us. It'll be here in a flash. And when y'all come back to work from Christmas, we've got barely five months till our health insurance program renews. And time passes very, very quickly. So if we don't think about the renewal on our health insurance program for all the county employees, we will find ourselves in this room with the same issue and the same dilemma we had that I witnessed for the past two years. That being, no options, no good tools, the, the, one of two major competitors in the large group market, not even being called upon to compete for the business of our plan. Where budgets are busted, our taxes are raised, our county retirees aren't looked after, as we heard from Mr. Day, uh, in this room. And our perception and our sense of impropriety are offended. Thank you for your time.
Madam Chair, I tried so hard to make this five minutes, but it was about five and a half, so when I run out, I'm just gonna submit the, the written statement for the minutes for the record. And, uh, I guess you can start me now.
Okay.
Good evening, Honorable Henry County Board of Commissioners and Chairman Wood. My name is Tina Coria, and I live at six sixty Chambers Road. And on behalf of the homeowners of District Two, I just wanted to take this opportunity to follow up to last month's rezoning for my very good neighbors, Joe and Jean Rowan, who are now selling the property to Tim Jones and Talon Homes. After you granted the medium density rezoning from R A, both parcels rezoned where participants in the Georgia Department of Revenue's Conservation Program to R Three Medium Density for the forty point one seven acres located in northern corner of Chambers Road and Mount Carmel. The purpose of the conservation program, and I am providing you with the program outline, allowing for property owners to pay little or no taxes in ten-year increments, was created by the State of Georgia to give the hundred and fifty-nine counties the ability to take the pressure off of a farmer from succumbing to developers' clandestine offers due to insurmountable property taxes that would normally be paid by a farmer if his property was zoned for residential, commercial, or industrial uses. In other words, anything other than agricultural. It was to ensure that farmlands participating in conservation programs would remain agricultural or make a very basic future transition to rural agricultural homes, R One, R Two, or estate lots, three acre minimums. If I failed to formally request for the briefing materials I provided each of you and Mr. Gibbs on the nineteenth of September for R Z seventeen oh two, that included copies of the legal plats and pages for the contiguous properties that provided the legal R Two zonings for each of the subdivisions listed on Planning and Zonings, Page Five, and the Conservation Program information for the forty point one seven acres being rezoned by Joe and Jean, along with the twenty-five acres that former Commissioner BJ Mathis and Chairman Jason Harper assisted us with in negotiating for Telfair subdivision that was set aside for the Telfair Homeowners Association as their green space, and making the subdivision a conservation subdivision, which is why the subdivision only nets one point oh seven homes per acre, and showing that the twenty-five acres set aside for green space and conservation belong solely to the Telfair Homeowners Association to be added into the minutes as part of the formal record, then I am now formally requesting that the briefing documents I just stated that I previously provided each of you last month, to be made a formal part of last month's rezoning record. Thank you. Until we were able to have Henry County come into conformity with the Unified Land Development Code as required now that we have joined the A R C, and until the land use update in two thousand nine, Henry County Commissioners used R Two as a catch-all for all residential rezonings that were not R One or planned developments. Unlike the municipalities, which is where the medium or high density belongs, our Henry County Unincorporated Board of Commissioners did not have nor properly used rezoning codes. Unlike their contemporary counterparts, the municipal mayors and city councils, the citizens of unincorporated Henry County worked tirelessly and diligently to update the current Henry County Comprehensive Land Use Plan to change most of that entire area, and especially District Two, from potential medium density, two point five units per acre, to low density, not to exceed two point oh units per acre, allowing for R One, one acre lots, R Two, thirty thousand square foot lots, assisting in retaining our unique rural neighborhood characters. Please keep in mind that growth for the sake of growth is the same rationale of a cancer cell. If we do not honor what the citizens have worked so hard for in the past thirty years, which has seen it corridors, rural residential, agricultural preservation, and green space conservation areas, protecting our flood plain, sensitive wetlands, and protecting private property from the impact of seasonal flooding, then you good folks are creating the city of Henry County, not Henry County Unincorporated, because there will be no more county. We will no longer be a bedroom community without agricultural heritage and a semi-rural flavor, but rather high-density neighborhoods with strip malls and chain stores. I know the citizens of District Two did not come to Henry County for that, but rather to retire, to raise our kids, and be away from the city of Atlanta with great schools and parks. Last month, with one vote, one stroke of the pen, you good folks destroyed what took us District Two citizens years to build. We gave you the tools by working through the public process and updating the R Two zoning definition, bringing us into compliance through the U L D C and updating our land use plan so that you could say no to inappropriate zonings, therefore giving you the legal defense necessary in court, especially to a developer that has sued our county on multiple occasions and lives in Buckhead, not Henry County. One unanimous vote, one stroke of the mighty pen, and you made him millions with zoning for dollars. Please remember, it is not the size of the house that makes a community unique, but rather the density of the lots creating pervious green space that makes our community unique and preserving our agricultural heritage. If you good folks will not enforce the land use plan and stay consistent with the rezoning codes, then who will? Sadly, after visiting with Mr. Gibbs, I've learned that the citizens still do not have, after twenty years of asking, any type of administrative recourse for appealing what we deem as an inappropriate rezoning without pursuing it through the courts. That needs to change. Hollywood has addressed inappropriate behavior and a lack of recourse, and I ask Henry County tonight to please do the same. The mission of the citizens of Henry County District Two is to bring about social and policy changes that promote opportunities and a greater quality of life.
Thank you.
Thank you. God bless you all. I'll turn this in. Thank you all.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Ashley Rel. I live in McDonough, District Four. I used to work for Nash, I used to work for Henry County Parks and Recreation, uh, as the Special Events Coordinator at Nash Farm Battlefield. I was really happy to hear from Mr. Perkins, that you approached him to, um, to meet about Nash Farm. So, um, I wanted to once again reiterate, uh, that, ooh, I'm reading the wrong thing. I wanted to reiterate that the Convention and Visitors Bureau of, the Clayton County Convention and Visitors Bureau is tapping into their historical resources to promote tourism. People from all over the world come to visit. Nash Farm could definitely be something we could look into, could tap in, could be a moneymaker. And I am also happy to donate my time, and if anybody wants to meet, and any resources I may have. I'm also wanting to plead to you for the Confederate Monument on the square in McDonough. That is a monument to the deceased. It is a tombstone, and I urge you to protect it. Thank you.
The next six speakers are Jacob Smith, Steve Cash, Lori Bachelor, Carly Kane, Benita
Good evening, Board. My name is Jacob Smith. I'm a Hall County resident. I am every son, brother, husband, and father. I have been starved, frozen, witnessed men ripped apart in front of me. I've seen my very home state burned, scarred, raped, and defiled by a foreign army. I answered the duty call in obedience to my state, and I died in submission to my country. In farmers' fields, now memorialized in glory, I marched, bled, and perished. I gave everything I had, including the very last drop of my blood, to defend everything I hold dear. My mother cries for me, while my darling wife consoles the children who will never see their father again. Why do you hate me? Why do you attack me when I can no longer defend myself? The only thing my family and descendants will ever have to remember me by is one lonely soldier in the town square with his steely gaze locked eternally to the north. Today, crowds gather around to unlawfully dismantle the only gravestone I will ever have. If my cause were just, honor me. If it was a fool's errand, then learn from my mistakes. But do I really warrant such hatred either way? Good Lord, please will it not? I am the Confederate soldier, and I do not deserve to be forgotten. I wrote this when it came to my attention, that there are citizens of Henry County that wish to have the Confederate Monument McDonough removed. To that, I only retort with Georgia Code fifty tac three tac one. It shall be unlawful for any person, firm, corporation, or other entity to mutilate, deface, defile, or abuse contemptuously any publicly owned monument, plaque, marker, or memorial which is dedicated to honors or recounts the military service of any past or present military personnel of this state, the United States of America or several states thereof, or the Confederate States of America, the several states thereof, and no officer, body, or representative of state or local government, any department, agency, authority, or instrumentality thereof, shall remove or conceal from display any such monument, plaque, marker, or memorial for the purpose of preventing the visible display of the same. A violation of this paragraph shall constitute a misdemeanor. And in reference to, uh, back to Nash Farms, about the, uh, flags that have been ordered to be removed, that I think we are all familiar with the issue up until this point, um, I would like to say that, uh, Georgia Code fifty tac three tac ten, nothing in this article shall be construed to prevent the use of the flag of the United States or any flag, standard, color, shield, ensign, or other insignia of the State of Georgia or the Confederate States of America for decorative or patriotic purposes, either inside or outside of any residence, store, place of business, public building, or school building. So, by the very act of ordering the flag to be removed, not only from the flagpole, but also from within the museum, that was a violation of Georgia state law. And I would caution the Board in, uh, regards to the monument in McDonough, I would caution the Board not to further violate the laws of our state by removing this monument. We have the law on our side, and I promise, we are not going away anytime soon. And also, that is, uh, the conclusion of what I have prepared. And I speak for Mr. Rusty Perkins, uh, by saying this. I talked to him on the way down here. He's a, uh, truck driver, and, uh, he's pulling midway through Kentucky right now, so he apologizes that he is not able to be here, and he would like to let the Board know that his invitation for a, uh, sit-down meeting is very much still on the table, and he would like to hear from y'all about it.
Evening, Madam Chair, and my Commission friends.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Steve Cash. I'm Executive Director for the Henry Council for Quality Leadership Education. As always, I appreciate the opportunity to come before you, before the citizens of Henry County, uh, either through TV, internet, or here present. It, it's a way of life throughout America, that people can come up publicly and share things. We've heard things tonight. The good, the bad, and the ugly. Those are very necessary in a society, a free society. But I come here tonight not to share bad and ugly. I come here tonight to share the good. I come here tonight to share amazing, amazing things happening in one particular elementary school in Henry County. Now, I'm not gonna take my full five minutes. You know, I beg for an extra minute every time I come up here. I'm not gonna beg for that tonight. We're gonna let people that are involved, people who are on the ground at Courtneyian Elementary School, educators, share with you some things, some positive things that are going on. I am going to, uh, give appreciation to some of the folks that have been very much involved. I would like to show you what's happened at this particular school, Courtneyian Elementary, since Leader in Me, Franklin Covey's Seven Habits for Highly Professional, uh, Highly Successful People, was launched. This particular press release comes from Franklin Covey, describing what is going on at Henry County Elementary School. Courtneyian Elementary School has gone over and beyond. Now, now, listen to me. Courtneyian Elementary School is the lowest performing, has been the lowest performing school in Henry County for years. It had among, it was among the highest with discipline occurrences that required some kind of, uh, some kind of activity, some kind of action to correct that. Now, you can see on this press release what has happened out of twenty-seven Henry County Elementary Schools. Actually, it's twenty-six. We can't count Stockbridge Elementary, because, uh, they're not involved with this, uh, a particular test. Developing, E L A, English Language Assessments, Developing and Above scores improved from twenty-sixth to ten. Proficient and above climbed from twenty-third to fifth. Math developing and above improved from twenty-third to fifth. Proficient and above ratings jumped from twenty-second to fifth. Now, in the first two months compared, of this year compared to last year, disciplinary occurrences, disciplinary actions has fallen eighty-eight percent. We're talking about from one hundred and sixteen occurrences down to fourteen this year. Now, that's amazing. That's amazing. That's positive news that we wanna hear. Now, before I have some educators, educators come up and share with you a little bit, I wanna thank those that... I want to thank those that provided us the opportunity to partner with Cotton Indian Elementary School. We have Ms. Anna Edwards. She's the representative, District Representative School Board, District 5. We have Dr. Donna McBride. She represents District 4. They've encouraged us. They've been there for us. We have Mr. Rodney Bowler, who helped us get into Cotton Indian Elementary School with Leader in Me. We've had wonderful teachers. We've had a great principal who was put there specifically to turn things around, Ms. Lisa Travis, who cannot be here tonight. I say all that to say, listen to what these people have to say. Listen to them closely. Hopefully, you can jump aboard the bandwagon and help us get this in other schools in our community. So at this time, I want to introduce.
Thank you, Mr. Cash.
I want to introduce these three coming up right now.
Okay. These are individuals that have signed up for public comment?
That's right.
Yes. Okay. What were their names again?
Ms. Benita Adams. She's with the Talent and Gifted Program. Ms. Lori Bachelor, first grade, and Ms. Carly Kane, fourth, with the fourth grade.
Okay. Well, we have the, those that are called by name, they all have five minutes, so could you give us those names again, our clerk, county clerk?
Lori Bachelor, Carly Kane, Benita Adams.
If you could give her her name and address, please.
I'm Lori Bachelor. I teach first grade at Cotton Indian Elementary. I want to thank you for giving me just a moment of your time. I'm excited to be here just to brag on our school for just a minute. I've been teaching at Cotton Indian for 11 years, so I've seen the transition through the years, and what Mr. Cash was just talking about is an exciting thing to see. I've always been proud to be a teacher at Cotton Indian, and we've always been doing positive work there. But what I've noticed since the Leader in Me process has taken hold in the past few years is basically a move from a good school that was trying to do good things for their students to really greatness that we're really excited about. Leader in Me has changed the climate of our entire school in terms of the mindset of its teachers, parents, and students within the school. So as Mr. Cash was showing you some of the data or the results from our work, basically, I think what's happened, what's happening through Leader in Me is we have a changed mindset that all students, all teachers can lead at our school. And through that, the students have been empowered to take charge of their learning and to set goals for themselves. Through their goal setting, they basically are responsible for their own learning, and we're guiding them. So I think what's so exciting is that as a school, we're headed towards a common goal and a common purpose, whereas before Leader in Me came in, we were trying to make great things happen, but kind of going a variety of directions. The Leader in Me process is one in which teachers, students, parents are all focused on the same goal and the same way of getting there. And through that, we've been able to see remarkable improvement in behavior, as well as not just test scores, but in us as teachers in terms of reflecting on why we're there and what we're trying to do for our students, and also, as a result, just the students are making great gains in their academics as well. So I'm very proud to be a part of the process, and I thank you for having me.
Thank you.
I'm Carly Kane, and I'm also a teacher at Cotton Indian Elementary School. I teach fourth grade, and this is my second year in the Henry County school system. I've been an educator for six years, so I come from an outside education system. I would second what Ms. Bachelor said as our entire climate has changed, and I believe that one thing that Leader in Me has changed in me as an educator is we're developing the whole student. We're not just developing their education sense. We're not developing their test score. We're teaching them how to be successful in any walk of life that they take. One of our big goals is that 100% of our students are leaders. Every student that walks into Cotton Indian Elementary School every day has a job. They have a purpose. So our attendance is increasing. If a student's not there, who's doing that job? Which, again, I think they take that into their future, whatever route they take. Also, I feel like we really take control of the seven habits, and we teach that for our students. We're sharpening saws. Once a month, we celebrate success. We have different programs for kids to take action in. That's not only education, but it creates, again, the entire student. So I just wanted to second that Cotton Indian is a great place to be, and our students are truly changing. Not even the numbers are changing, but just the students and their personalities and their purpose for coming to school is changing.
Thank you.
My name is Benita Adams, and I am also a teacher at Cotton Indian. I'm very proud to be a Cotton Indian teacher, very proud to work with these young ladies. We have a very good time at Cotton Indian, not just because we love our jobs, but we have great children. I teach gifted. I'm the gifted support teacher at Cotton Indian. And what I would like to say to you is, so many people ask the question, how do we teach all kids as if they are all gifted? Is that possible? I want you to ponder on that for a second. Absolutely, through the Leader in Me, because here we have a U.S. federal law defines gifted students as those who perform or who show promise of performing at high levels in any one of five categories. Watch this. General, general intellect, I'm sorry, guys, intellectual ability, specific academic aptitude, creative or productive thinking, and here's the big one, leadership ability. So with the Leader in Me, here comes being proactive. That's what we're teaching. We're teaching children how to begin with the end in mind. We're also teaching children how to put first things first. Think when when. Seek first to understand, then be understood. We want to teach them how to synergize. Is that a gifted trait? Absolutely. And sharpen the saw. Can all students synergize? Can all students sharpen the saw? Well, through Leader in Me, absolutely. There are some who categorize gifted students as those who are experts in fields of giftedness and have characteristics such as a sense of humor, sense of justice, a keen sense of observation, and problem solver capabilities. Well, can all students do this? Can all students be taught through Leader in Me? We're going to have high expectations for all students at Cotton Indian, all 700-plus students, and that's why we are here today, to let you know that Leader in Me is a process. So that means what we're teaching our children now, they're going to have it for the rest of their lives. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My names Don Dunlap, 192, Ashley Drive in McDonough. I'm speaking to you about one of the crucial components of positive economic development in our community, which is workforce development. Employers are demanding a workforce that has 21st century skills. They want to locate in communities whose citizens are creative and innovative, skilled communicators and collaborators, critical thinkers and problem solvers. In fact, as you craft our comprehensive plan for 2040, we need to ensure that we have citizens with these skills to implement that plan successfully. Fortunately, there is a vehicle in place right now in our community that can make this happen. It is called the Leader in Me. Leader in Me is built around Stephen Covey's Seven Habits of Highly Successful People, which many organizations, such as Western Digital, Mary Kay, Procter &amp; Gamble, and even our own Cotton Indian Elementary School, have used to transform an organization in decline into a top-tier, high-performing one. The staff at Cotton Indian Elementary, many present in this room, under the leadership of Principal Lisa Travis, have used the Leader in Me process to transform Cotton Indian from one of the worst performing to one of the top-performing elementary schools in just two years' time. Disciplinary referrals, as you've seen, are now 1/8 of what they were year over year. Academic achievement, as measured by Georgia Milestone Results, has soared by infusing the seven habits into every facet of life in this learning community. Further, students at Cotton Indian Elementary are taking these skills home. Their parents are learning about the importance of planning as they begin with the end in mind, the importance of proper rest and nutrition as they sharpen the saw. Cotton Indian does not have to be an isolated pocket of excellence in our community. Other business and community leaders can join with us at the Henry Council for Quality Leadership Education by giving of their time, talent, and especially treasure to replicate this model at other schools in the cluster and ultimately in the entire system. Now, we do realize that you are the Board of Commissioners, not the Board of Education, but our message is that our entire community should be unified and working together to make programs like the Leader in Me a reality for Henry County as a whole, and the creation and maintenance of a community of skilled 21st century citizens requires the active participation of all community stakeholders, not just those tasked with education. We exhort you, those in attendance here, and those viewing at home, to join us in supporting the Leader in Me.
Thank you. Is that it? Well, we thank everyone for their public comments, and we will now move to the next agenda item, which is the approval of minutes for the October 3 regular Board of Commissioners meeting. If there are any changes or comments regarding the minutes, if not, we'll open the floor for a motion. We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second motion for approval. Any comments or questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion moves as approved for the minutes. We'll now move to our Chair and Commissioner comments. Are there any comments by the Board? Commissioner Clemens?
I would just like to say to staff, the gentleman that talked about the wrecker service, I did not get a phone call from him, but I have gotten phone calls before in reference to the overpricing that the wrecker service is charging people. There was a gentleman whose son had a wreck, a young child on the interstate. Police came, towed his truck, and the car wasn't even there, two hours, and it was a ridiculous price. It happened to be a resident of Henry County who works for that department, and that's an Atlanta police department, and he suggested that we may need to check out what's going on in other communities, but I know that that is a serious issue, and I just want to make sure that the gentleman knows that I heard him, and I'm asking staff to please look into that because that is very unfair, and I don't want another citizen coming up here saying that they've been robbed by a wrecker service.
Any other comments? Okay. Okay, Commissioner Wilson?
I want to, I want to say something about DOT crews, that their work don't go unnoticed. I've had several phone calls and text messaging the last couple of weeks, and they was recognizing our crews out there working, cutting right-ofways, doing the pothole repairs, and as well as picking up, still picking up debris on the side of the road from the storm, so I just want to let, let the staff know and their crews, that they don't go unrecognized. So thank you for them, guys.
Great. Any other comments? All right. My comment is, is that I announced at the beginning of the year that I would not vote on planning and zoning items, and I will tell you after some comments and after prayer for consideration, I owe it to vote on those matters on behalf of our citizens and the voices that I've heard. So I will be voting on planning and zoning items going forward, and of course, I will recuse myself from any voting matters that may be of any conflict of interest. So I just wanted to make that public as well to the Board and to our citizens as well. Any other comments or questions? All right. Well, we're now moving to our next item regarding our upcoming meetings and events. On November the 2nd, from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., there will be an open house for our 2040 Joint Comprehensive Plan here at the Henry County Administration Building. And then on November the 7th, at 9:00 a.m., we will have a regular Board of Commissioners meeting. And then November 21st will be our 6:30 p.m. regular Board of Commissioners meeting. So I understand, County Attorney, there any items for executive session?
No, there are no items.
Okay. So no items regarding that. So hearing none, is there anything else for the good of the group? If not, we'll open the floor for a motion to adjourn. We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor to adjourn? Any opposed? Everyone, please have a good night.